The September 19th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for residents to address us on city issues. The portion of the meeting from 6:30 to 6:55 is reserved for this time. If you're interested in speaking to the council at that time, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date. The phone number is (949) 8412. And let us know your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits after scheduled speakers, then we provide the opportunity for people to be unscheduled speakers during that period of time. This portion of the meeting is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions, again, please contact the city manager's office. We have a couple of donations today that we'd like to recognize. The first is a donation from the Sampson family. Mr. Lathammer?
Your Honor, council members, as you recall, back in 2008, we received as a gift from the Sampson family, the Art Center here in Eden Prairie. And since then, they have also been kind to us in terms of donations and support, and have helped us fund many improvements or also additional accessibility to the Art Center. And this is another case where we are looking at kiln and some new tables and chairs and other small items of equipment that this will help fund based on their contribution. So, we really appreciate their continued support, and not just from a financial standpoint, but they all visit the Art Center on a regular basis and really have infused that community love of art and bringing it out to community members. So that's something that we really value them for.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the Sampson family and move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $10,222.34 from the Sampson family to go towards Art Center equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you to the Sampson family. The really wonderful thing is that the Sampson family is not even an Eden Prairie family, but has chosen to make a donation of this Art Center to the city, which is wonderful. The next item, Mr. Lathammer?
Yes, the Brandy Warm Beer State Farm Insurance Agency is making a donation towards our Spooky Saturday program. And that program really relies on individual donations. We will continue to see those come in as the event gets closer, and we'll share more of them with the council as they come forward.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $250 from the Brandy Warm Beer State Farm Insurance Agency toward the Spooky Saturday program.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Again, thank you to the State Farm Insurance Agency. These donations are really the thing that makes our programming work, so thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add or subtract?
Mayor, there's one item to subtract from the consent agenda. We're gonna have to remove item H, which is a software maintenance agreement that is not ready for approval at this meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And I would just like to add a real brief note under council members' report.
Okay. And I have something for that, too. Thank you. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council workshop held Tuesday, September 5th?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendars or motion?
Move approval.
Minus H.
Exactly.
Second.
Anybody want to pull anything for discussion there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Brings us to our only public hearing tonight, which is the redevelopment plan modification, establishment of a district, and adoption of a TIF plan for Elevate at Southwest Station. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. You are very familiar with Elevate at Southwest Station. That's a project that was before you at a previous meeting of which you approved. For a first reading for a mixed-use development at Southwest Station, six-story building, 222 apartment units with structured parking and 13,000 square feet of retail commercial restaurant space. Tonight is a public hearing that needs to be held for consideration of tax increment financing for housing tax increment financing district. The action tonight is simply to hold the public hearing and then possibly, following the public hearing, to direct staff to include the TIF agreement in the future consideration and the second reading and final reading of the Elevate project, which we'll come back to in October. So, we have our community development director, Janet Jeremiah, is gonna provide an overview of the TIF plan, eligible uses, and some details surrounding the request tonight. And then, as I mentioned, we have a public hearing to hold and then some action related to the future and final approval of the Elevate development.
Your Honor and council members, as Mr. Getcho said, this is a public hearing. Future consideration of the TIF plan documents themselves will take place on October 3rd. But the public hearing is to consider the amendments to these TIF plans, including a modification of redevelopment project area number five. And you see that on the overhead camera. It takes up a pretty good percentage of the city from 169 on the east and much of the Golden Triangle area, our major center area, as well as some of our commercial areas near Highway 5 and Eden Prairie Road. And so, the major change to this redevelopment project area is actually to add a TIF district, which is difficult to see because it's only a couple properties in approximately the middle of this redevelopment project here. So, that's actually a very small yellow dot on your plans in your packets. So, I will enlarge that for you here. And the actual new housing TIF district are properties at the northwest corner of Prairie Center Drive and Technology Drive, including the vacant Anchor Bank property near the north side of the site, and the vacant Ruby Tuesdays in this area. And of course, this is the Southwest Transit parking ramp for the Park and Ride, and there's other retail in this area, including a new project with Artaco, et cetera, just to the south of the proposed TIF district. So, just to give you some information, the TIF plan itself, that's an attachment, the draft plan, provides a lot of parameters per state law that we can utilize. And then, the TIF agreement is actually gonna provide more specificity with regard to the requirements for this project. And you'll see the details of the TIF agreement on October 3rd. But just to go over that a little bit with you, again, the project is for 222 units of apartments in five stories, over one story of retail restaurant, about 13,000 square feet. The housing TIF district, there are options that you can utilize for the affordability. You can either have 20% at 50% of the area median income, or you can have 40% at 60% of the area median income. And this project applied to have the 20% at the 50% of the area median income. Now, there will be other income, there will be mixed income basically throughout the project. So, we anticipate there will be some market rate rents that meet 80% AMI affordability, some moderate income types of rents at around that 100% AMI, and then there'll be some higher-end market rents as well. With regard to the affordable units, we have indicated that a minimum of eight of them must be two-bedroom units, a minimum of 17 of them must be one-bedroom units, and then there is a typo in your report if you did the math. No more than 20, it should say, can be studios, not 12, that was my mistake, to add up to the 45. Now, with regard to how do we control those particular units, they will be dispersed throughout the apartment development. They won't be concentrated in one area or distinguishable by finish or anything like that. But what we will look at is both the income of the prospective tenants and to make sure that they're at or below the 50% of the area median income. We will also control the maximum rents so that we don't have a situation where residents are paying 45, 50% of their income towards housing, where we like to see it more in the 35% maximum range. So, we are, you know, putting requirements into the TIF agreement, although that is not a requirement of state law. State law only requires that you look at the income, and oftentimes, people are paying a higher percentage. When the applicant Timberland Partners applied for the TIF, they actually applied for $8.77 million in new TIF district funding over 26 years. And with the help of Ellers Public Finance, we reviewed that proposal and found that they actually meet the but-for test for that due to the high initial costs of development. But after a few years into the development, they start making substantial enough profits that, you know, it starts to be a very, well, not very, but a lucrative enough project that they could work out their finances in a way that maybe they wouldn't need the maximum amount of TIF at the beginning. So, we have suggested limiting the TIF to no more than about 20 years of generation with a $7.7 million cap, or about a million less than they originally asked for. And again, that would be 20 years rather than 26 years that the project would receive TIF. The city could continue collecting the TIF for the remaining six years and put that into other projects, or we could close out the district at that time. That would be our choice at that time. The applicant also requested $500,000 in pooled housing TIF. These are monies that we've collected from other projects. For example, in this project, we would only be giving the developer 90% of the TIF, 10% would be saved for administration, and if there's any excess that we don't need for administration, it would go into pooling. So, that's been done in the past so that we have these accumulated monies from other housing TIF districts. So, they are asking for half a million of that. Again, we have found that the need is there. In this case, they are asking for the pooled TIF as a loan with a 1% simple interest rate. So, there are specific provisions in the agreement with regard to paying back that pooled TIF. If there is a refinancing of the project, they would pay it at that time, a sale of the project, or at the end of the 40-year HUD term. They could also choose to just kinda pay it gradually with interest on an annual basis if they want to do that, but that isn't mandatory per the agreement. But with that simple interest, if it does go the full 40 years, that $500,000 will come back as $700,000 to the city again for future housing projects. So, that's gonna be a substantial part of our funding in the future. Park dedication is another area where they had some difficulty, again, initially coming up with the park dedication that we usually have paid at building permit time. And again, due to so many of the high upfront costs of this project, they did ask for some waivers with regard to park dedication. We did think it was logical to waive the park dedication for the affordable units, again, to help incent and encourage and make sure that those come in as part of the project. And so, those would be waived altogether, but there are still market rate units that would pay $872,700 worth of park dedication. Now, you will see that there's a proposal in the TIF agreement to defer that payment and collect it out of surplus cash flow once the property starts generating substantial, or at least normal, I guess you could say, returns, and that would be 10% cash-on-cash return. So, once they're above that 10%, they'll start paying the park dedication out of a portion of that surplus cash flow until it's completely paid in full. But again, if there's a sale or refinance, that kind of thing, we would expect the park dedication to be paid at that time. And those are the general points of the agreement. There are other public funding sources that have been requested, and some of them have already been achieved for this project, including $550,000 in county monies, and there's also a Metropolitan Council grant request that's under review right now for $750,000. So, the city is not the only one who is interested in seeing this project happen. It's really been a collaboration and a partnership with the developer and with these other funding entities as well. We also have Jason Arsvold from Ellers here this evening to help answer questions, as well as the development team, who you've heard from before and are certainly willing to give you any update or answer questions as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho.
Janet, very good summary. What I would like to see you do, if you can briefly, just summarize TIF, because I know a lot of people have questions, you know, what is tax increment financing? And it can be a fairly complicated topic. So, I think for anyone watching here or at home, it would be nice for them to have a little brief synopsis of how that functions.
Sure, I'll do my best. As mentioned, the properties right now have two existing buildings on them, Anchor Bank and Ruby Tuesdays. There's a value to the property, there's a value to those buildings, and taxes are generated today based on those existing uses. So, the increment is the additional tax that would come from the greater redevelopments. It's a much bigger building, it'll be a new building, higher value, so the tax generation will be higher. And the increment is the difference between the future taxes and what they are today. What they are today continues to go to the city, the school district, the county. The new increment is used to pay the cost of the extraordinary costs of this development and try to make the developer kind of hole between what are the maximum rents they can achieve on those 45 units and what they could have achieved had they been market rate.
Great. Thank you. Good, good.
Councilmember Case.
I guess I'm forgetting about cash park fees, but are they collected only on residential properties because of the impact on parks and trails, or are they also collected on commercial properties?
They're collected on both.
So, anytime land develops, then, again and again, do we keep collecting additional cash park fees on the same piece of land over and over?
Shh, don't tell anyone.
Over and over and over. And I understand if we did, but I'm just trying to intuitively understand that, to me, in a fairness way, it almost would be we would collect additional cash park fees on the additional impacts on our parks and trails or use. And so, as we move from commercial into residential, I can understand a little bit of pieces of that, but it does seem like we're collecting the same tax on same properties, so I'd love an explanation.
You explained the rationale perfectly. There's an increased demand on our system because of the additional residential units, so the discussions about the amount of park dedication fee that were to be paid were all geared around the additional impact, taking into account the amount that had originally been paid.
So, intuitively, if we went the other way, if we tore down an apartment building and put back some kind of industrial warehouse, the cash park fee costs would plummet, we'd still have a little bit, because there's impact of workers that are using our trails or something, or how does that work?
There might not be, we haven't had that situation. There might not be any in the reverse situation.
So, if...
Because there wouldn't be an increased demand. You're talking about in that situation, a decreased demand.
So, is the cash park fee based on the increased demand only meaning that if an apartment building went on to a farm site back, like, when we were, you know, developing land back in the 90s, I understand that it went from like nothing to suddenly this development, but this project already had an impact on parks, one could argue, with workers during the day and people visiting restaurants and whatever. So, is, there's an incremental, well, maybe major, because 277 units or something?
222.
222. But, so there's additional impact, but still, there's already been payment on somewhat of the impact. So, is this a lower cash park fee than it might have been had it just gone onto a farm site?
Essentially, yes. Let me be more explicit on this one, and it's the way I described it to the developer. You get packed cash park fees when property is subdivided. And the property was subdivided. They're combining it. So, the rationale for cash park fees is that they're asking for additional considerations from the city that you wouldn't have to give otherwise. And it's not just that they're asking for something additional, it's that they're asking for something additional that will put a tremendous impact upon our park system. So, we said in return for granting these other things, this is what we would like, and there was a negotiation regarding that. So, it wasn't a mandate from the city in terms of...
An algorithm or something. It was negotiated.
So, there was a negotiation regarding that.
Mr. Jeremiah, did you have a comment on that?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I was just going to note that if this was a new development and hadn't been a redevelopment, we would've also looked at the commercial piece, but because there had been commercial there previously, we did not calculate new park dedication for the commercial piece. We saw that as already being covered, as you mentioned, in the past.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or for Ellers or for the development team? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Elevate?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and direct staff to include the redevelopment plan modification for redevelopment project area number five, establishment of TIF District 22, and adoption of a TIF plan in agreement for Elevate at Southwest Station on the October 3, 2017, HRA City Council meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval of the payment of claims?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please. First, any items to question? Okay. Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terlukens?
Aye.
That brings us...
Mayor, could I make one comment? I'd like to thank staff for doing a good enough job and explaining it and such that we don't have to have comments very often on what is in all the money that goes out. And it wasn't always quite that way, and I do appreciate that it is now.
Agreed.
This is, you know, what I just have to add, this is an exciting project for our city, and it really is showing that it's bringing a lot of things together when you have the transit development there and the redevelopment and TIF and bringing in affordable housing. It's really, and along with the LRT line, it's pretty cool.
It is.
There are a lot of cities, when I talk to sister cities, that this is a big deal.
Yes. Thank you. And that brings us to reports of council members. Councilmember Aho, you have something.
Yes, so what I wanted to bring forward the council is that, as you know, I serve on the 494 Corridor Commission, and we recently redid, rewrote our joint powers agreement. So, it's a joint powers agreement between the five member cities, Eden Prairie, Edina, Bloomington, Richfield, and Minnetonka. And so, we really weren't, found out that we weren't really operating according to what the original joint powers agreement was drafted and signed. And so, we really wanted to update that to make sure that it represents what we currently are doing. And so, we've gone through a pretty lengthy, protracted redraft of that document. And so, what I'll do is I will, I'll send that out to staff, and then they'll distribute it to all of you, and then we're gonna need to vote to approve that document.
Is that at our next meeting?
At our next meeting.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to let you know that's coming.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
And then I just had one brief thing, and it seems to me I brought this up before, but the other day I was driving down Columbine Road, kind of by Fountain Place Road, and it was late in the afternoon rush hour. There's a pretty steady stream of cars that's using Columbine Road. It's difficult to cross, and it was a beautiful day, and there were a lot of people out in the parks, a lot of people walking, and there's no place on Columbine that has a crosswalk down by Fountain Place, which means basically that any active senior who's at that apartment has a hard time crossing the road, as do children that live in the Fountain Place Apartments on the west side. And I know that road section where Fountain Place comes into Columbine is kinda problematic because of slopes and turns in the road, but I'm wondering if we could take a look at the possibility of getting a crosswalk in there someplace, even if it has to have some flashing light on it, you know, even if we have to put a stop sign at that intersection, because there's just no way for people to cross. So, if we could get a look at that and get some feedback on that, that would be helpful.
Great idea.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is city manager's report. He's asking us to look at this energy action plan and adopt it. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We're very excited to bring forward an energy action plan to you tonight that is part of our Sustainable Eden Prairie project. So, as a little bit of a way of background, as you know, this past year, we unveiled our Sustainable Eden Prairie program citywide. And there are four main components to Sustainable Eden Prairie. One, water. Also, another, solid waste. Another area would be pollinator and landscape, and the fourth area is energy, in terms of being environmental stewards and reducing our carbon footprint in all of those areas. For instance, on the solid waste side of things, you had an entire workshop devoted to a solid waste management plan, and there'll be more to come in that area. Tonight, we're gonna talk about energy. And on the energy side of things, we were able to work with Excel Energy and secure a partnership with Excel Energy as part of a partners in energy program, where they have worked with the community to put together a citywide energy action plan. And I think you'll see, when you look at the beginning of the plan, that we have a cross-section of folks who participated in putting this plan together. We have, you know, at the staff level, we have planning staff and former intern, and we have Marissa Bayer, our community development coordinator, with us tonight. We had great representation from our city commission, so I see our Conservation Commission Chair and Vice Chair of our Human Rights and Diversity Commissioner here tonight, and our representatives from Excel that are gonna speak to the plan in a little bit. In addition to major business involvement, you could see that we had representatives of some of our larger and heavy-energy-using businesses in Eden Prairie, in addition to Councilmember Kathy Nelson, serving on this committee as well. So, tonight, we'd like to bring forward an energy action plan. And you may remember, there was a lot of discussion about 2040-15 and what 2040-15 was. From 2005 to 2015 is a major energy money savings program for the city, and that was mainly for the city internal operations, our fleet and our facilities. But I think what you're gonna hear about tonight is our plan for the next 10 or 15 years related to energy is community-wide. It, again, will... It again will focus on public institution, city, school, and it will also focus on the residential and commercial aspect of our community, and it will also include some, some set goals and benchmarks for achievement, that was another piece that the council felt was important to the next energy plan that we have under sustainable Eden Prairie. So with that, we have Elena Foché with the Excel Energy representative with the Partners in Energy Group, and she's going to take you through the plan, and then hope that you are able, following that, to adopt this plan, and then we will move into, I'm sure she's going to cover this, move into our implementation phase later this year and into next year.
Yeah. So, I'm going to stand right here. My name is Elena Foché, I'm a community facilitator with Partners in Energy. I want to appreciate all of the Energy Action Team members that are in this room and the ones who are not in this room, we've been working hard together since February to put together this plan, so it's, it was a lot of work, it was a great, really, really great group to work with, and I'm super excited to present the plan and very excited to get started on implementing it. So, so I'm just going to give, you all have the full copy of the plan, I'm not going to go into the, a ton of detail, feel free to ask, stop me and ask me questions, but overall, the process was a collaborative effort between the city and Excel Energy, we have Yvonne Fifer from Excel Energy here, joining us, she was there, as well as Tammy Gundertzick, who couldn't be here tonight, were there throughout the process, we also had representation from Centerpoint Energy, and they were able to provide us with energy use data, which was really helpful to get kind of the complete picture, almost complete picture. You know, as Rick said, the Energy Action Team had some great representation, including Eden Prairie Center, the, the general manager of Eden Prairie Center was there, other businesses, community members, it was a very active and engaged team, which was great. We met through, over the course of five months, we had five in-person workshops, as well as some work in between the workshops, we looked at baseline energy use data, we looked at past efforts, Eden Prairie's already done a lot around sustainability, so what's already been done, what were the successes, what could we build on, and then we talked about goals, we set goals, we spent a lot of time talking about how we're going to reach those goals, and then the next step after the plan is approved is we have a meeting set at the beginning of October to sit down and really talk about the action plan from implementation, so we will put together a memorandum of understanding between the city and Excel Energy that details what each is going to contribute towards implementation, and then we'll talk about who's doing what, when, and I'll get into a little bit more detail towards the end. And as Rick said, this energy action plan is going to sort of represent the energy portion of sustainable Eden Prairie. So we started out the process coming up with a vision and guiding principles, the team really wanted the vision to be something catchy that could fit on a T-shirt, is what they said, so sustainable energy solutions for Eden Prairie. And then we came up together with some guiding principles that sort of laid the groundwork for the goals and strategies we were going to set, some of the things that were really important to the team were reducing carbon footprint, so a mix of both energy efficiency and renewable energy, inclusive engagement, and really trying to look for opportunities to engage the community, supporting business growth, growth, and then protecting and preserving the environment, the, the team really talked about the natural resources in the community and wanting to protect those. So just, I'm not going to go into all of the energy use data that we reviewed, but just a couple of highlights to let you know why it is we ended up choosing the goals that we did. So this shows the breakdown of how much of the total energy used by the community is used by the residential sector versus the commercial industrial sector, so, and there are about 26,000 premises, and a premise is essentially a meter, so it's usually tied to a building, although some larger buildings have multiple meters, so there's about 26,000, about 3,000 of those are commercial, so really only a tiny fraction, but those 3,000 use more than half of the energy in the community. In terms of greenhouse gas emissions, since this was a big area of concern for the team, this just shows the pattern over the, over time, the majority of this reduction unfortunately is probably weather-related, 2014 was a very cold year, and it's been a little bit warmer since then, so a little bit of the reduction is from energy conservation, but a lot of it's from weather. But as you can see, we, the city gave us permission to take a look at, at the municipal energy use, it represents about one and a half percent of the greenhouse gas emissions, energy-related greenhouse gas emissions for the city. Overall, we did a quick calculation, greenhouse gas emissions in 2016 from energy equated to about 163,000 cars driven for a year, so that's more, that's like more than two cars per person in Eden Prairie driven for a year, right, or about two cars per person driven, so that's a lot. Another quick data point we looked at, Eden Prairie, it's kind of hard to see, but it's like the third one over is Eden Prairie, this is average residential energy use or household energy use per day compared to some other cities, so main point here is that Eden Prairie's on the higher end compared to other kind of communities in the area. We also looked at, we broke down commercial buildings into five different groups, that top 20% of commercial buildings, so that's about 500 commercial buildings out of the 3,000, uses 91% of the community, of the commercial energy, so huge opportunity for savings there. And then, I won't go into a ton of detail here, but this is just to show that historically there has been some action, right, Eden Prairie has, residents and businesses both have done some things to save energy, invest in renewable energy, so we're not starting from zero, definitely a good base to build on, and lots of opportunity, only one of every 16 households has done something in the last three years, so that's tons of opportunity for more participation. Okay, so I'm going to go through the goals and strategies, very high-level, broad-brush overview, and then you are welcome to ask me for details. So we decided to focus on three different areas, residential energy, which, you know, includes all kinds of residents, but primarily homeowners, renters also, but to a smaller degree, it's very much focusing on, on homeowners, large commercial industrial buildings, so that's those top 20% of commercial energy users, and then public nonprofit and service organizations, so that includes city buildings, churches, there was, there was a lot of church buildings that are, kind of fall into the high-energy user category, nonprofits, there's a few nonprofits in the community, and the school district, so the school district was a part of this process too. So on the residential side, our goal is that 75% of Eden Prairie households do something by 2025, so participate in at least one conservation program, so Excel Energy and Centerpoint Energy both offer a variety of conservation programs to help you do an energy audit, upgrade your insulation, replace appliances with ones that are more efficient, all kinds of different things, so we're looking for 75% of households to do at least one thing, either in energy efficiency or renewable energy, and so that might be subscribing to WindSource or Renewable Connect or, or something else. So to make that happen, the big thing we're looking at is a community-wide marketing campaign, so that's the primary thing we'll be working on first, is trying to figure out, we, we have a survey that we're going to put out tomorrow, right, it's going to be posted, a survey of residents to try to gather some input that's going to help us guide messaging and communication tactics, we'll put together co-branded marketing materials, and then we'll get the word out in every way we can, we will very much be looking for, depending on the Conservation Commission, and then looking for other community volunteers to help with outreach, so that might be tabling at community events, it might be doing outreach through congregations and faith communities, you know, organizations, whatever. We also talked about a community-wide energy challenge, so I know that you have a water, water conservation challenge, it's been fairly successful, so we were thinking about that as a model and trying to build off of that. We talked about targeting multifamily buildings specifically, so both tenants and building owners, trying to get some energy efficiency upgrades in units, and particularly targeting low-income apartment buildings in the community. And then, energy efficiency and renewables in new construction, so this one is a little bit more of a policy research, trying to figure out what the right thing is to improve efficiency in new construction and renovation, and then present, figure out what, what the best option is, and then present it to council, so the Conservation Commission will play a big role in that too. Large commercial sides, we're looking for 50% of those largest users to do something over a standard three-year measuring period, which is, this is getting really into the weeds, but basically it's an incremental increase of seven or eight large commercial customers every year, taking some kind of action. So here, doing outreach through established networks like industry associations is really critical, really using trusted messengers, the, I know the mayor and the economic development manager has meetings with businesses, and so we're hoping to leverage that opportunity to bring in some energy messaging. We also talked about engaging contractors that serve commercial buildings, so your, your HVAC contractors, your electrical contractors, making sure that they are selling energy efficiency with their services, and then developing some technical tools, so this is like ROI calculations, and, you know, what are, what are the top 10 things you can do in your commercial building, things like that, they're going to help building owners and managers make good decisions around energy. And then finally, this is a big one, this is where the city gets to show itself off as a leader, the school district also is very interested in showing itself off as a leader, so overall, public nonprofit service, service organizations will reduce energy use 20% by 2025, the city will support renewable energy development equal to 25% of its energy use, this goal is very carefully worded to allow for community solar subscriptions to be counted towards achieving this goal. School district is going to reduce its energy use by an additional 10%, and then all organizations in this category will invest in renewable energy 10%, equivalent to 10% of their energy use. So number one is recognition, and sort of showing off leadership, providing targeted information, we talked about holding workshops specifically aimed at facility managers of church buildings to talk about energy conservation there, because there's some very large church buildings in the community, promoting renewable energy options, supporting the city in pursuing onsite renewables, and then the school district wants to do a student engagement campaign, so they want to do like a behavior change campaign in the schools, they're going to look for a few schools to really sort of be, stand out as leaders. Overall, what this is going to lead to is a 30% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2025, energy-related greenhouse gas emissions by 2025, and then the goal is 80% reduction by 2050, and we'll talk about the impact of this plan towards that goal in a second. A couple of just sort of community-wide broad strategies, continuing to utilize the sustainable Eden Prairie award as a way to recognize businesses, residents, you know, organizations, whatever, who are showing leadership, really hoping that city council will help engage other commissions and sort of engage community members, get them involved in implementing this plan, and then looking for all, all available opportunities to get some community volunteers, we're really looking for community engagement. So I'm going to very quickly go through the impact, a ton of data analysis and data work went into developing this, but just really quickly, the combined impact of the plan is about a 9.4% reduction in energy use by 2025. This, what this shows really briefly is that by 2025, there's going to be an incremental increase, so additional savings of about 15% on the electric side and 22% on the natural gas side, over what's currently happening, so that's great, that's some big progress. This shows you the relative impact of each of the focus areas, large commercial industrial energy savings is where the biggest bang is going to come from, so really, really hoping that some, some of the large commercial energy users will show some leadership, residential sector is also a really important part of this plan, and then public nonprofit service is, is, we call it the leadership wedge, because it's the wedge that shows everyone else that it can be done. And then this chart just shows the emissions impact, the greenhouse gas emissions reduction. So the line that goes up, this is projected increase in energy demand based on population growth, so we assumed that commercial energy use would grow a little bit, but population, you're going to, you're going to, you expect population growth over the next 10, 20 years, so we tried to account for that. The large pink, lightest color wedge is grid decarbonization, so that's the investment in renewable energy that Excel is making and will continue to make, so you kind of get that for free, I guess, towards reaching your goal, and then the rest of it is the impact of this plan, so this, what's in this plan puts you on track to achieve 30% reduction by 2025, it gets you to about 68% reduction by 2050, so what that means is that, you know, as we move along, 10, 20 years down the road, Eden Prairie will need to look for some additional strategies, so that might be more renewable energy investment, that might be something around electric vehicles, you name it. Okay, so really briefly, implementation, so this is the next, the first part of this process was planning, the next part, we don't go away, we will continue working with the city for the next 18 months to support implementation, really trying to get this plan off the ground. So what that looks like is, it looks like Marissa and I and Beth checking in weekly sometimes, every other week, fairly often at first, to try to get things moving, a lot of support on marketing communications, you're lucky that you have a robust communications department here in the city, so they will be taking the lead on a lot of this, and then we'll be kind of supporting them to develop the marketing materials, posters, the messaging, all that. Data tracking and measurement, we'll be providing every six months a report back to the city on program participation and energy savings to see how, if you're on track to meet your goals. Program expertise, so especially when it comes to the large commercial buildings, trying to figure out what the best actions are for them, or city buildings, or, you know, residents even, we have a ton of experts through Excel that can, you know, explain how programs work, help make decisions, connect to the resources that are available. And then project management, my biggest job is to help make sure that this moves forward and that things get done. There's also a very important role for the city, the Conservation Commission, the Energy Action Team, so the city has, in, in starting this process, is committing resources in the form of staff to help implement the plan and move it forward, so, you know, Marissa has been an incredible partner so far and will continue to be in working on implementing the plan, there will probably be other city staff pulled in, especially communications department staff. One of the things we talked about in the plan was trying to identify some funds to buy down the cost of home energy squad visits, and those are kind of your initial energy audit, installation of some efficiency measures, a really, really good first step for homeowners and renters to start on the path of energy efficiency, the, it's something that a lot of other cities have done to help rebate the cost of the visit, so that's one of the things we talked about, we also talked about potentially identifying support for a paid internship to help with business outreach especially, but also residential outreach. The Conservation Commission is going to play a very important role, they are going to monitor progress of this plan on a regular basis, they're going to be really critical in outreach and engagement, following up with businesses and residents, hopefully tabling at events, all kinds of things, the Conservation Commission is all in, and then we're hoping that some of the other commissions can be involved as well. The Energy Action Team will monitor plan implementation, the reports will go back to them every six months, and then they can decide if we need to change course, if we need to adjust goals along the way, and then, you know, like I said, Excel Energy is here, we, at our meeting in October is where we'll really get- And then community volunteers, like I said, very important. So this is the survey that is going to be launched tomorrow. This is the front page of the survey. It'll be launched online, on the city website, social media. So we're going to hopefully get as many responses as possible, really important feedback. Thank you.
Questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes, Councilmember Chair Wick.
Yeah, well, first of all, I thought this report was fantastic, so thank you all for working on it. I spent some time reading it, thought it was really good. I was just thinking, you know, we've got this Fall Harvest Festival, and you are pie, right? Partners in Energy. Why don't you have a booth and hand out pie and bring people in to talk about, I mean, you've got commissioners to talk about what this initiative is, because I think it's really interesting.
Yeah, so this brings up, let me just clarify a little bit on how this collaboration works moving forward for implementation. It's the city that leads it, and the city that's the one, so it would be the Conservation Commission, or city staff, or someone from the city who sets up the table at the community event, does the outreach and tabling. Our job is to help put together the brochures and pamphlets that are at the table, help train the volunteers so they know what they're talking about, about the programs, help design what the table looks like, if we want to do that. But, you know, that's a really great and a super creative idea.
Outreach is going to be really important.
Outreach is going to be really important, yep.
Any other questions or comments? Audrey, it's Audrey, right?
Elena.
Oh, Elena, I'm sorry. Is that slide that you showed that had roles and responsibilities, is that in our packet, too? I'm having a hard time locating it.
I don't, so in the plan, a much more detailed version of it is in the plan on page, page 44, 43, 44. So that slide is.
Doesn't look like this slide.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you. This is wonderful, and it's so great that it was done collaboratively with our commissioners, with our staff, with our business leaders, with representative from the schools, because I think it just has a lot more weight than it would have if it came from any one single group.
Yeah, and it was a really great group to work with. They clearly care a lot about the community and really wanted to see this plan succeed.
Is this the kind of thing that's happening all over the country with energy companies?
It is happening, so in Minnesota, there's 15 cities total that have gone through this process or are currently going through the process. This program also, Excel offers this program in Colorado as well, in its service territory there. In terms of other utilities, I think this program is pretty unique.
Is it? Great.
You know, and to add, Mayor, as well, is it is a program that some other cities have used, but each city's plan is unique to their community. So just taking a look at a few of the other plans in the area, it's different goals and different strategies. Some are similar. I mean, obviously, communication and outreach and utilizing the programs that exist are a big part of this. And that's where I just wanted to state that I think the key to the plan is to try to tap into what's already out there. It's not a matter of budgeting hundreds of thousands of dollars. It has a lot to do with tapping into what exists. Now, you did see there were a few areas where the city made some financial, possible financial commitments in future budgets, but buying down Home Energy Squad visits, for instance, is in our future budget, but it's something that is $10,000 or less. And then paid internships is something that is already within our budget, so we would just, at least in my office, the plan is to use those administration intern dollars for this program in the near future. So it isn't a large financial commitment. I know at budget workshops, there was discussion about making sure sustainability is in the budget, and we think we're able to do that at a really, really, in a cost-effective manner. So you're going to see some more initiatives coming forward, such as community solar and how we can get involved in solar as well. And there may be some financial commitments with that, but that would be considered separately, but it would go toward these goals.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I was very pleased to be a part of this group, as I've been interested in energy. But a lot of it boils down to people in their homes trying to find ways to use less energy and then save some money, because every time you lose, use less energy, you have some money to put towards something else for your family. It helps businesses on their bottom line. If they save energy, they're also going to have more profits. And it's just to getting people to thinking about doing those things that are easy to do. After listening to this, I went home this summer and changed all my outdoor light bulbs that are on at night into LED light bulbs. And that seemed like a real simple thing I could do that would have some impact, and slowly doing it inside. It's that kind of thing, that just getting people to think about it and getting them to realize that you can help the whole energy situation and save some money for your family. And that seems to be pretty powerful, if nothing else, just to save money for your family or your business. But while you're doing it, you can still live about the way you are and how to find, do the easy things and get around to doing it this year.
Good point. All right, well, thank you very much. A great presentation and a great booklet, too, that was put together for this. Would somebody like to make the motion?
Yeah, you should.
I would. I would move to adopt the resolution approving Energy Action Plan for Eden Prairie.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any opposition? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Are you all like not making motions tonight, or just want me to make? Is that the end or?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Did you feel like you were making?